I want to call to order the Planning Commission meeting, September 21st at 6:30. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Inez, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Miguel Magallanes.
Here.
Vice Chair Erin Todd.
Here.
Commissioner Albert Mendez.
Here.
Commissioner Carrie Broke.
Here.
Commissioner Jamie Laker.
Here.
Thank you. We'll move to Section 4 Oral Communication. This is the time for any citizens for presentation or comments not related to the agenda items. I see that there's nobody, so we'll skip to Section 5, the Consent Calendar. We're going to go to 5A if we could have the minutes of June 15, 2022. Meeting approved?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Section 6, Public Hearing 6A. There's the introduction of the draft 2021 through 2029 Housing Element. And I'm going to hand it over to staff for a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I've noticed this has a public hearing to allow the public to speak if they wanted to. But tonight is mainly an introduction of the topic called the Housing Element. And so let me explain what is the Housing Element, and then I'll explain the schedule of the Housing Element. First of all, I did print out hard copies for you. I gave each of you a hard copy. I'm not going to print it again. It's very expensive to do. But you do need to have a hard copy. You're going to need to write in there. Because this is not going to be your only night reviewing, and you're going to review it from now until October 19th. That'll be your next meeting. The state of California requires every single city to have what's called a General Plan. And in the General Plan are seven elements. And you're most familiar with the land use element. People commonly mistake it with the zoning ordinance. But it's nothing more than a map, and you identify where uses go, commercial, industrial, residential, and so forth. And then we have something called a circulation element identifying where future roads will be. The other element we have is the housing element. And the housing element is the only element that's required to be updated every five years. The other elements have a lifespan of 20 years, and you don't have to update it until that time. But the state mandates housing element needs to be updated. And the purpose of the housing element is that for each city to identify opportunities for low-income units to be identified where they can build. And it also measures the moderate income and above moderate income, too. It's very easy to build above moderate income and moderate income, right? Those are not as challenged. The low-income projects and affordable projects, those are harder to build for the developers. So the idea is to provide opportunity. And we're to identify, and the state is to certify your housing element. And that's quite a process. And all of this is quite a process. There's a timeline for the housing element. Ours is from the year 2021 to 2019. We're already one year late. In the previous housing cycle, we had approved it on time, but it didn't get circulated until the third or fourth year. Yes.
You said 2019.
I'm sorry, 2029. Yep, 2021 to 2029. Right. We go in reverse. We're going younger. So that's our time period, 2021 to 2029. And we need to open up our document as a public document, which we did on September 16th. And the public has a chance to review it for 30 days. And they'll send us comments. In fact, I've already received a comment today. And so on Friday, it became a public document. It's on the city's website. I've received a comment today, and we'll receive comments all the way up to October 17th. In that time period, we're going to have a public workshop. It's not your workshop. It's not the City Council workshop. It's a workshop with the public. And we'll have that on October 12th. And it'll be here in this room. We'll invite those people who've commented before. And normally, housing advocates. And then people who are really interested in an affordable unit. I've gotten a lot of those through the years. They come to the public counter, hey, you're building this project. I want to be a resident in it. We hear that all the time. So we'll get probably a number of those comments. And then after that workshop, then it'll be a public hearing, right? That's going to be October 19th for you. And you're a reviewing board. You're not going to make any real decisions on this. You can make some recommendations. You'll see the comments that came from the public. But then you'll springboard it to the City Council. And if you can finish your review on October 19th. It might take you a couple of times, but I hope not. Hopefully, tonight you can learn a little bit. And then the next 30 days, learn a lot. Send me emails with your questions. And I'll try to get those answered. And then hopefully, on the 19th, you'll be able to make a recommendation. But then it goes to the City Council. And in November, we hope, and then the City Council will look at it through public hearings. Ultimately, they will approve it to go to have it submitted to the state of California. And then the state of California will have 90 days to review it. And then within the first 30 days of that 90 days, the public will comment to the state. All the housing advocates have probably answered to us, or even if they didn't, they'll have another chance to comment on it. And then we will receive the document after 90 days. We'll make corrections. And we're going to go back and forth like that with the state. So we're probably really looking at March before the state says it's okay, maybe June. And then it comes back if the state certifies it, and then we have to adopt it. And when we adopt it, you look at it again as a Planning Commission. I'm going to go to take it to a Planning Commission public hearing. You're going to look at it again. And you'll make a recommendation to the City Council. And then the City Council will approve it, and it's certified, and it's finally done. So we've been under this review for a year now. We started in March 2021. So you have the document in front of you. The first few pages of the document is our background of who we are. So I'm not going to go over that, but I really recommend you look at it. I would like for you to. And please let me know our typographical errors in there. There are plenty of them in there. For instance, other cities are named when it should have said Fillmore, right? We had a boilerplate, and we didn't remove Contra Costa, or Brentwood, or some other name in there. The data should be accurate, which I think it is. So look through the first three chapters, and you can skim through it pretty quickly. But really focus on Chapter 4. Chapter 4 are the programs that's going to be assigned to the city of Fillmore that we're going to have to do from 2021 to 2029. And that's the chapter that housing advocates are going to look at. They're going to want us to have more and more programs. And I will let you know, the people who will do the programs is the Assistant Community Development Director and myself. It's only the two of us. So I want to make sure you know that. I have six tabs I want to quickly go over with you. And these tabs are the heart of the document. And I'll name the page number for you, and if you just quickly look at it, you might want to note it. Because that is the heart of the plan. If you can turn to page 4.1. And you will see the number in the middle of the page, 415. That number is from the state of Califor-- from Southern California Regional Government that assigned the city of Fillmore to build 415 homes between now and 2029. And in the document, if you read the document, we have adequate projects right now where we will be able to hit that number. In that number, it identifies 73 of those units will be very low-income. 61 units will be low-income, 72 units moderate-income, and 209 units above moderate. We should be able to do that without any problem. Previous housing cycles, the state of California assigned numbers that were way too large for us, and we didn't hit the numbers. I mean, they really packed it in for all of Southern California. Then if you move forward to page 2-1. And this is our population forecast. And there's-- we're not even meeting the projections now. But if you look at Fillmore and versus the other cities, if you look at the projected number of 2021, it says Fillmore is supposed to have 20,000 people living here. And I think we really are more about 16,000 to 17,000 people. It's page 2-1? Yeah, and it's the table. It's a population projection. So when we do housing elements, we project the number of residential units we're supposed to build. They look at our housing projection. I know I'm going to be bouncing back and forth. So let's see if I can find this one.
Can we ask a question about this?
Sure, you can. You can ask a question on it right now.
On 2-1?
Yes.
Where do these numbers come from? Is it just a census number?
It's a census number. Yep, yep. And if you can turn to page 2-8. And look at the table, 2-11 is average household size. That's a very telling number, and we're comparing ourselves to other cities in Ventura County and the city of Santa Clarita, right? So we have 3.49 persons per household. And Ventura only has 2.62, right? So they don't have as many people living in a household as we do. Look at Oxnard. They're at 4.02, right? And Ventura County is only 3.08. Santa Clarita is 3.06. So we have more people per household than most. And that's an important number to kind of know. That's kind of telling us we need housing. The next one is on page 2-10. It's Table 2-13. And this is our income level, our median income level. Let's start with first looking at what is the median income for the Ventura County? And when this was calculated, the income level for Ventura County for a family of four, the income level was $88,131. That's usually a dual-income family, and that's the median. So half of the people make more than that, half the people make less than that. In Fillmore, the median income is $76,590. That's a pretty high number. And then if you take a look at the other cities, right? Look at Santa Clarita. Santa Clarita is a very high number, nearly $100,000 for median income. Why is that? Why is this important? Income levels, low income, very low income, is based on the county median income of $88,000, right? So 50% of that is, I think, low income, and there's 80%. Everything's based on the $88,000 income level in the county, right? So we're not compared to Los Angeles County. We're not compared to Fresno. We're compared to only Ventura County.
Does this look unincorporated, Ventura County, right?
They--
Overall, after the entire--
Right, it's everything. It's not just unincorporated. No, I'm sorry. That is, the one that says Ventura County at $88,000, that's unincorporated. Yep.
Is there any particular reason to include Santa Clarita?
Yes, I asked for that. In years past, we never did. But we're getting a lot of residents moving to Fillmore from Santa Clarita. And I'm trying to find out who and what is Santa Clarita. It's only 25 miles to the east of us. But we're getting a lot of their residents moving to Fillmore. Why is that? What's occurring over there? So I added that because they're a nearby city. If you could look at page 3-32. That's a list of our vacant properties. I need-- I'm going to tell the consultant to improve this map. Is yours in black and white? Okay. If you could look at our city's website, the colored is an aqua color, you'll see. So we've identified where our vacant land is, because in the vacant land is going to be housing. If you look at North Fillmore, and you've already recommended approval on North Fillmore Plan, 15% of those will be affordable. I need to present that to the City Council, which will be next week. But also in there is a direction given by the City Council about three years ago. And that was to look at our commercial property along the Highway 126 that has been residential since the 40s, and it's never going to be commercial. And the council's direction was, hey, staff, take a look at that and see if we should rezone it to residential, residential high. And that's actually a housing program in Number 4, and I'll get to that in a minute. That's identified here in blue as well. So we have the vacant land, and then land that we're going to be rezoning to get the 415 number.
Kevin?
Yep.
The project behind Cabrillo, or is it Cabrillo?
Many Mansions? Which one? But I know where Cabrillo is along the railroad tracks.
Cross from Many Mansions. Is that included in this number?
Yes, yep.
How many units is that one?
Well, we don't have a project yet. We had a project. You approved it. City Council approved it. And right after the City Council approved it, the applicant withdrew his application, and there were 24 units there. But that's not going to happen now with that particular developer. It's city-owned, it's successor agency-owned property. And so we're identifying it as an opportunity for someone to put homes there. Now, if you can go to page 4-2. This is what I said was the heart of the housing element. These are the programs that we will be doing from 2021 to 2029. Read through those. Those are-- and the state has submit a report every single year to check on our progress. That's pretty important. And if you could flip the page to 4-3, Goal Number 3. And if you look at the very bottom of the page, that's what I was describing. The City Council's asked us to look at commercial property that's already residential. It's been residential since 1940. It's not going to be residential. They're asking us to rezone it to residential high, 15 to 20 units per acre, or 20 units per acre. I can't remember which one right now. That's a housing program, and it says we're going to do this between 2021 and 2029. But there's a state law that says you have to do it within a year that you approve your housing element. We were to have approved our housing element in October 2021. We're one year late, right? So the state's saying it doesn't matter. The clock started in October 2021. You have to do it within a year. So we've already started this process. I will be coming before you. I'll show you an ordinance. And I'll ask you to make a recommendation to the City Council for a zone change for that entire area. It's between Highway 126 and Santa Clara Street, and it's between Mountain View and A Street, that whole area. And they'll have its own public hearings, its own environmental document, and it's a housing program already in here. But we're already starting on it. In fact, we're already starting on the housing programs. Brian and I have already started doing that. The North Fillmore specific plan, that's a housing program. And there's some other housing programs that you'll recognize in here. We're already well underway in doing it. We didn't wait for the housing element to be approved. That's it on the introduction and an explanation of what this document is and then what the state says. We're going to be hearing from advocates that want more and more and more affordable housing. And it's, without a doubt, we need more affordable housing. I mean, if you look at the prices of the Bridges subdivision, that's not affordable. It's not intended to be affordable. But the city intends to have affordable units elsewhere, and we're working on that, right? So, and I also want the city to feel confident that we've been doing affordable projects in the past. It's not ignored. Sometimes when advocates make their comments, we feel a little sense of guilt, like, geez, we haven't done anything. But we have. We've approved Many Mansions project. It's under construction. It's being occupied. We did the Cabrillo project along the railroad tracks. We did the Parkview Apartments behind us. The adult-- I lost words-- senior housing to the south of us. That was built in 1972. That's affordable. And we have a lot of affordable projects in the downtown. You can't see them. They're buried within downtown. And then on the Kaufman Road or KB Home project, there's affordable projects in there. And every time we approve a project, 15% of them have to be affordable. So we have done it, and we're going to continue to do it as we march from 2021 to 2029.
Kevin?
Yes?
Do you happen to know the number that other cities use for affordable housing in their projects?
Some cities have used 15% like we have. Others, it's less. Some don't have it at all. And then other cities instead do what's called inclusionary housing. Or it's an INLO fee that says, hey, you're supposed to do 5% affordable housing, but we'll collect money instead. The city of Fillmore has an ordinance that allows for that. But we need to identify the dollar amount that we will accept. We haven't done that part yet. I'll take any other-- I'm done with my presentation. I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, I have a question here. Based on the RENA numbers that we have, I have-- was under the assumption that we were meeting our criteria. But it sounds like there's still more that we need to do. So what is that based on? I mean, if we're meeting our RENA--
We will meet our RENA of 415 homes.
Right, okay.
We're not-- we did not protest that number given to us, and we're happy with the number, and we will meet it.
So I feel like we're targeting different areas within the community to make--
We need to-- the total number we're going to hit, but the what we-- the breakdown of low-income and very low-income, we're going to have a hard time meeting that number. So because of that, we're looking at some vacant land and rezoning some commercial property.
Okay. And then another thought occurred to me, too. You know, there's this pending legislation. I'm not sure where it's at in the process in Sacramento, where Sacramento's going to allow developers to come in and say, especially the advocates for low-income housing, and say, we want this property that is zoned for business.
Yeah, or industrial.
Or industrial, and we're going to put houses up there.
Yep.
So, I mean, that obviously is something that, you know, I want to fight. I don't want to see--
I don't know if any city will want to have that. So if-- I described that one of our general plan elements is a land use element where we've separated the uses, and we've identified the locations. There's a pending legislation that says-- the state says, we will override your general plan. And if any affordable project wants to go in commercial or industrial space anywhere, they're permitted to do that. It's not law yet, but it's a pending one. So our Business Park master plan area, you know, let's say we have 80 acres there. We have an affordable project that wants to go there according to this law that is not a law just yet. But if it does become a law, well, then they have a priority. And so for us as planners, we look at a balance. We can't be a city that's all residential, right? We suffer at the whim of the economy when that's the case. You know, we have to have jobs, and we have to have businesses. We have to have industry, and we have to have commercial uses, right? We have to have a balance of that. Or if we were an all-industrial city, we would have a problem. I mean, you see that. The city of Industry in Vernon is all industrial, right? They don't provide any housing. They've got like 12, 12 homes. And we know those residential cities, it's all residential. But when the economy goes into recession, they suffer quite a bit. So we're trying to balance. So it's not a good idea for industrial to be converted to low-income. I mean, that's my opinion, but I'm not a legislator.
Kevin, I have another question. So the North Fillmore specific plan, that number for low-income, is that number set in stone, or is it negotiable?
It's not negotiable. 15%-- It's written in the plan now that it's drafted that way. So we're waiting for City Council to approve it. Once the City Council approves it, then it's 15% has to be affordable. But they'll be given an option. Either they do the units, or they pay the INLO fee.
And if they pay the INLO fee, how does that affect our numbers that we have to meet?
It's just identi-- well, we need to provide the numbers. It could negatively affect it.
Okay.
So let's say it costs $500,000 to build one house. And let's say we only collect $15,000 per unit. You know, it'll take us forever to collect $500,000. So when the rubber meets the road, that's what we're really talking about.
Okay.
So when you review development projects, you always hear Brian and myself describe, hey, they're providing X number of affordable projects, units. And we always do that. And this is it. This is the very reason. This is the housing element. The KB Home project, just to let you know, there are three units right now that's affordable. It's already been purchased by affordable people. They have four more to do. Oh, we just talked to the fourth person today. So they'll have three more to do. Any other questions on the housing element? So you're going to-- we're going to be getting a lot of people who-- they may not be people from Fillmore. They're advocates, right? They're from outside Fillmore. But they represent people who live in Fillmore, farm workers and low-income people and stuff like that. And they just, they-- And they just, they represent them, they'll write comments, they do this for a living, right? They're, they're pretty sophisticated, and they know exactly what this is. And they will, at your, at the workshop, they'll identify what things should be added into the housing element. You'll review that at the public hearing, your next meeting, and then I'll take that and I'll present it to the city council. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Brian, Kevin.
All right.
Any questions?
Michael, did you want to add anything? Did I miss anything?
No, I don't think, I think that's a good introduction. The key, the, the housing element's not forcing the city to build housing. It's really about making, like, the process of making the opportunity for housing available to be able to get to that number. So over time, the state's kind of gotten more and more aggressive about how they're enforcing those required, to actually have cities get to those numbers, so housing's actually created. So I always think that that's a useful way to think of this.
But statutorily, we are required to meet the numbers that they dictate, aren't we?
That's what winds up happening.
Yeah.
They turn in numbers, they have to, well, Brian and I have to turn in an audit every year.
Right.
The annual progress report.
Right.
And we have to hit that number, 415. If we don't, they carry it over, we're on sixth cycle now, it gets carried over to the seventh cycle.
Well, and aren't, isn't there the potential for fines as well?
Yes, fines and lawsuits.
Right.
Yes.
I had a question, Ed, because Kerry asked a question, so did, the last cycle, did we meet that number?
I believe we did. Yeah, the Bridges subdivision helped, the Mini Mansion project helped. So on, on the, the fifth cycle, the one we just finished, we identified five parcels to rezone. They were zoned, they weren't zoned commercial. Do you know, we did it, and we have projects on it? Let me run through them for you. So on the Mini Mansion project, that was a three acre site that was zoned commercial highway. The expectation by the city was it was going to be a large gas station area. It got sold, we worked with it, we worked through Mini Mansions, and it's 88 units of low income. So that's number one. Number two is a project you just approved, a portion of the project, and that's River View Gardens on River Street and Central Avenue. That's also 88 units. So it was zoned commercial, it was, it was supposed to be an expansion of the shopping center. But when we were looking at the housing element, we said, you know, it'd be good if we could put housing right there, right? We have an application today. We're, Brian and I are reviewing it. It's a 234 units adjacent to the one I just talked about. It's called the Balden Square project. It's commercial highway zoning. They submitted an application for, to change it to residential high. It's, and they're asking for a general plan amendment. You will be getting that project. It's, it's, it'll be a year of Brian and I reviewing. So that's, was converted, commercial highway to residential. And there's another one next to the old Margaret's Cosina. There's a vacant two acre site there that's, that slopes down considerably. That's commercial highway, but we have an application for that, right? Then, so we're changing that from commercial highway to residential highway, or residential high. There's another one at the old packing plant on Sespe Place, Landeros Place, where we looked at a, what's it called? Work, live work situation. We showed that in the housing element, and we received an application. It was going to be all industrial, and then they changed their mind after they read their housing element, and it was going to be a live work situation. But as we're going through the process, they're going back to their original intent, having a multiple artists in there. So, but it didn't have to change to housing, although we showed it in the fifth cycle, we were going to be doing that. So these housing elements, they do result in changes, and we've done it. So we should be very proud of what we've accomplished. I show that to the, the state all the time. Sometimes these things get academic, and you never, never do anything, it just sits on the shelf, right? But we've been doing it. We should be happy. And prior to that housing, I mean, I've already named some of the projects we've already, we'd been doing.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We'll review this month and come back October 19th to speak more on it. But since it's a public hearing, want to see if there's any cards in us for-
I think there will be a little flat out there.
So we'll open the public hearing, and we have Scott Zimmerman. If you can come up to the microphone and speak on it, and we'll give you five minutes. There'll be a flashing yellow light once it gets to one minute for you to sum up your presentation. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I don't think I need five minutes, but it's definitely the most I've ever had. Yeah, first time I've been addressed as being one of those who represent a classification of people that don't necessarily live here. I mean, I don't live here, so I'll just be upfront, honest about that. I'm a representative of the carpenters, local 805, so we cover the entire stretch LA County line to Monterey County line. I actually live in Santa Maria. We have members who do live here in Fillmore. Actually, one of our other reps does live here in Fillmore. We decided to switch roles today, and he's up my neck of the woods. And keep you guys talking about affordable housing, and curious on what that looks like. I mean, I really wish the forum would be more back and forth rather than going over what you see here, you know, what the plan is, and, I mean, you guys get to ask questions. It'd be nice if it was a little bit more engaged back and forth, because I'm curious on what the numbers are as far as affordable rent in this area. I mean, I know in my area, that's, what, $2,800 a month is considered, I guess, affordable. That's not affordable to me, even at the, honestly, really good living that I make. A skilled and trained union carpenter, you know, able to bring home $100,000 a year, but when you include a wife and five kids, a stay-at-home mom situation, it's not very affordable. I imagine it's pretty similar here. We were just in Ventura last night, same kind of things being talked about, hearing some crazy stories of people buying homes, of course, you know, 30 years ago, and their mortgages, if they even still have one, being affordable. That same space that they got, say, for $800, $900 a month, has now turned into $3,000 a month. You know, and it's not an easy thing to address. One way that we see being able to address that, and it's happened up in cities like Hayward, and there's certain other municipalities that have adopted skilled and trained workforce, language into their general plans, into their housing element plans, something that we do get and provide as a labor union. I came up through a four-year apprenticeship program. I learned a trade that no one can take away from me. I can take that anywhere in the country. Honestly, I can take that anywhere in the world. I'm not going to leave America, though. I love my country. I love where I live. It doesn't get much better than the Central Coast. And that's something I can hold on to. That's something that my kids get to see that I've done. I can show them what I've done. I can show them, I worked on that Willshire Grand project in LA. It was tough being gone for over a year. Come home, you know, on Sunday, but anytime we go downtown, cruise through there, or go see family down south, they say, hey, I helped build that. Something that can never be taken away. Something that we would like to see happen right here in the city of Fillmore, Santa Barbara, wherever it is. People that live here get to work here, be a part of the community. Buy locally, you know, shopping locally, all those things. A skilled and trained workforce, implement that kind of language, we're using accredited apprenticeship program, which is something that we have that helps accomplish, it's a small part of it, but it does help accomplish that goal, and does provide a pathway to affordable living, because now you're helping raise people up that can actually earn a better wage and afford, you know, modest living. We're not talking about mansions, not talking about, you know, having vineyards, like this great mural we have back here, because that's not for everyone. But just something that they can earn a good wage, have a nice, you know, home to provide for their wife, their kids, and maybe one type, you know, at one point, at some point, when that time comes, retire with some dignity and still be able to be there and be a contributing member to society right here in Fillmore. So if that's something that can be looked at and, you know, discussed back and forth of adopting that kind of language in there, something we would like to see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Jonathan, I will reset your timer, and it will be five minutes with a one-minute sum
Again, it's not going to take the whole five minutes. Again, I'm, named Jonathan Duran. I am a third-generation union carpenter, born and raised here in Ventura County. Went to Santa Paula, unfortunately, so go Cardinals for anyone that's a Flasher fan. But again, it's having the option of a livable, livable wage. You guys spoke about the Assembly Bill that's going through the state right now, that's AB 2011. That's rezoning of commercial and resident, or commercial industrial into residential, affordable residential. What that will trigger is the mechanism for union tradesmen to be able to work on these projects. It triggers prevailing wage, and so residential prevailing wage, but it's still the livable wage that we ask. One of the things as my, as myself, I'm a representative, I go and speak at high schools throughout the Gold Coast. We have a curriculum that we have that's called Career Connections. Pretty much, it's a pre-apprenticeship program that, it's a pathway going from freshman in high school all the way until you're senior. By the time you finish the program, you have a, gone through a pre-apprenticeship program and be able to have a opportunity to join the carpenters. Not saying that every student that does go through this program becomes a carpenter, but they have the skills of, hey, I know how to measure and how to cut, I have those options. But with having these students graduate, myself, like I said, finished high school, thought I would go to college for a couple of years, didn't work out, came back, but I had an option to go into the trade, because I had the knowledge of, hey, my grandfather and my father were those tradesmen that built with their hands, built a lot of residential homes up and down the coast. So for me, it's like, hey, that was my plan B. But for students, the hardest part about coming back into a trade, or coming into a trade is just, hey, if they're not familiar, or if they have to deal with the long drive of that, most of us have to travel, like Scott said, myself. Hey, my first job was two and a half hours away as a first-year apprentice. I won't, that's, that's the sacrifice I took. But having some type of, some type of implementation in the housing element of a local hire, skilled and trained, accredited apprenticeship program, those things will have, help those students be able to work here, live here, and it just stimulates the economy. Guess what? The money stays here, goes to the grocery stores, goes to the shops. Trust me, I used to come with my buddies, we used to go up to the movie theater and watch the movies here in Fillmore. I have family here, firework show, man, love it. But this is a great community. Like I said, we all don't want to see our, like, San, born and raised in Santa Paula, don't want to see it become San Fernando Valley, and none of us do. But like I said, if you have an opportunity to put that, opportunity to be able to put, employ people here within the city, and hey, keep that money here, that's what we're, that's what we're here for. But again, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know, we did receive their comment. They submitted a written comment today, and we do have a public workshop where there will be give and take on October the 12th. Yep.
Thank you, Kevin. That sums up the public hearing. I will close it, and-
Just as a quick procedural, what my suggestion would be, is that this item, this public hearing item be continued to the next public hearing, just sort of as a formality. Staff anticipates re-noticing the public hearing anyway, so we technically wouldn't need to continue, but since it's the same item and it was a public hearing, I think it just makes sense to continue that.
Okay.
So I would suggest a motion and a second, then to continue the public hearing till the next planning, which is, yeah, October 19th, 2022.
So we'll keep the public hearing open, and if we could get a motion to move the, or to continue the public hearing for review and comment.
I'll make a motion that we continue this item to the next planning commission meeting scheduled for October 19th, 2022, and keep the public hearing open.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
We'll move to section seven, business items. Let's see, there's none, so we'll go to section eight, reports and communication, 8A, planning committee, planning and community developer director. Is there anything?
Yes, there is. I'd like to hand out to you a list of our projects that we're working on right now. I broke them down into categories or the status. So if you look under the category of certificate of occupancy, please note number five, KB Homes, that's identifying the three affordable units that are already completed, and I mentioned the fourth one today is under construction. If you look at number six, Lupe's Market with all the, with the sidewalk removed, it's been removed for over, for a year now, and that's in the Caltrans right of way, and they're trying to get a permit through Caltrans. Just want to make sure you know that. Mini Mansions has occupancy, temporary occupancy, that's the 88-unit project. And if you look at number 12, 970 Ventura Street, that's the building adjacent to McDonald's and, and the car dealership. It's a vacant building, it's been vacant for over 10 years. There is a tenant that would like to move in there. We're trying to give it certificate of occupancy so they can move in. The tenant is Tri-County Health. And then the Fill, I'm sorry? Tri-County Health? Health.
Is that what Remax is?
Yes. But this will be the entire second floor.
Oh.
Yep, or the first floor, I can't remember which. But they're, they're going to, they're going to take an entire floor. And then if you look at Fillmore Theater, someone has purchased the theater, and they're going through certificate of occupancy right now. There are corrections that need to be done, and he's working on doing that. And if you look under the category of acceptance, in the Bridges subdivision along Mountain View, you know, that's still the responsibility of the developer. We haven't accepted that yet, right? So I'm going through a punch list with them to make corrections, and when the corrections are all done, it'll then be turned over to the city of Fillmore. Under construction, that category, number one, Rotocraft, that's Jamie's favorite question every week, or every time we meet. So we finally have the sidewalk done and some of the curbs done there. The landscaping's not installed yet, but they're working on that. That sidewalk's 10 feet wide, because that's our bike path, it's one section of the bike And if you look at 341 A Street, that's your future project. We've been working, that's a packing house building, we've been, they've been operating while correcting safety issues on the inside. We've been doing that for a couple of years now, and pretty soon you'll get the full application for everything they're doing on the inside. They'll be expanding quite a bit on, on the interior. They'll be getting, they'll be requesting for more tenants. Number nine, the Red Engine Microbrewery, the building permit's been issued, it's under construction right now, they're looking at certificate of occupancy around December. We'll see, you know how construction goes, sometimes it hit delays, but that's the target Items under building permits that we've, we've issued and we haven't heard from, there's a new cell tower that looks like, well, it looks like the emblem of City Hall that's right in front of you on the monitors. It looks like a tower with our emblem on it. It's on Santa Clara Street, right along the railroad tracks. We've, you've, you reviewed it and you approved it. We went to plan check, we approved the plans, they were under construction and installed. So I just want to let you know, those buildings- So, I just want to let you know, those building permits have been issued and we're waiting on them. Those things that are still in Plan Check, no building permits issued, right? Look at number one, Sonic, where are we with Sonic? Right, so that's like in Plan Check number nine. Who's ever heard of Plan Check nine in all these years that have gone by? There's a lot of engineering that needs to be corrected on this site. It's a very, very, very tight, tight site. So, there's a lot of engineering remaining to be done before they start construction. So, most of these nine Plan Checks have been through that department, drainage, sidewalks, that kind of stuff.
Kevin, our report, our list indicates Plan Check number six, I think.
Yeah, I found out on Monday, my list I made was on Monday, but I found out on Monday we're really up to nine.
Okay.
And then you see all the question marks behind it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, this is a working document.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Through the housing element that you just reviewed tonight, we have a program in there that we're to monitor accessory dwelling units, ADUs, how many do we approve every year, and then monitor how many that we have. So, we've been approving them, and we put this on the list, there's quite a few in the city, and there's going to be more. This is going to be a popular item, so this is pretty much just to explain to us that we need to go back and, and count them and start a book or a log that we have, so we can include it in the housing element and report it to the state. If you look at number six, Popeye's Restaurant, they're in Plan Check, they're moving pretty quickly, so I don't want to guesstimate when that will be approved, but they're moving pretty, pretty quick, and they're next to the microbrewery. And number eight, I've mentioned already, that's the 88 apartments that you've already approved, Riverview Garden. If you saw a couple of weeks ago, you saw the surveyors out there, so they are putting together that plan, they have not yet turned it in, but they are working on it. Then we have a whole bunch of items in the planning application process that hasn't gotten to you yet, we haven't started the public hearing, we still have a lot to go. So, in the North Fillmore area, the 135 units in North Fillmore by Williams Homes, the 240 apartments called Balden Square or Balden Expansion, that's number two, that's taken, that's a, that's a very complicated project, four stories. And then we have People Self-Help, Low Income Project, we'll get that resubmitted tomorrow. The important thing there for you to know is that you're not going to review it. City Council members are not going to review it. So, this is a city staff-level review of 50 low-income units. And then if you look at number five, that's the, that's the one along the highway, we've converted from commercial highway to residential, we're reviewing that. Look at number six, it just says Dog Park. So, we have an existing dog park, the city got in trouble for not providing ADA access, so we just closed the park. And since that time, we, and we want to reopen it, we want to rebuild it, and we want to provide for ADA. You're going to actually have to review that project, the design, so we're waiting for the plans to come in, and you're going to review the two- or three-acre dog park. And then the last one...
I'm sorry, with regard, with regard to the dog park, funds have been set aside, been designated by City Council.
Yes, they have. There's $200,000, that's, we have a budget, it's a limited budget, it just not, doesn't go very far, so we're going to design this thing to fit that budget. It's the, I think it's the Biden ARPA money that's coming through.
Did I hear you write that you said two to three acres?
I think it's about two to three, is it less than that, is it one acre? It's less than that?
It's probably like an acre and a half.
Like an acre and a half?
Yeah.
I just remember, it's, it's, it's not, I've seen the new plan, it's on one little sheet of paper, the landscape architect said, oh, here's what you can do for $200,000, which means no grass. Right, you, you can't have all that grass, that costs, that'll blow $200,000, so we're looking at decomposed granite or, or clay, or some other kind of material. But anyway, we're getting ahead of ourselves. You'll see it, and you'll be able to comment. And then number seven, that's the General Plan Amendment, Zone Change, Zoning Ordinance Amendment per the housing element, that's in draft stage. I will be trying to get that to you as quickly as possible, you might see it as early as October, maybe November. And we have planning documents that you've already seen, and that's the North Fillmore Plan, I'm presenting that to the City Council next week. And then number nines are housing element. And we have code enforcement issues, but I just want to leave it at that, as code enforcement issues, let's get a little private, so I don't want to really comment on any of those, but you'll notice some of them are, there's one there that says illegal units, right? So, you were talking about affordable units, I will just tell you that these illegal units, they were charging $1,900 for rent, and the, the area, the square footage was about 200 square feet, and they were illegal. And, man, $1,900 for that amount of money, you should be getting a lot more. So, anyway, we're, we're working on that particular issue, but when, when we look at affordable prices, so it, you know, take it to heart, they're, they're good people who need houses, the, those four people did, and they do, they should just be getting a lot more for $1,900. That's my opinion, sorry, I shouldn't be using my opinion, but they were illegally constructed. Anyway, that's, that's our, that's our update, some of the projects that we're working on.
Thank you, Kevin. Move this 8B, if there's any brief reports from the planning commissioner. Seeing that there's...
I've, I've got one. Kevin, thank you for addressing with the RV storage, about the signs being updated from coming 2019 to coming 2023, I saw them yesterday, they look great.
I had nothing to do with it, but I'll take a compliment.
Well, I...
It's probably Brian.
I had emailed somebody and asked about changing the signs.
No, you had asked me, but I, I mean, I can only do so much, but I didn't change the sign.
Kudos to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn the planning commission meeting to the regular schedule for October 19th, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the City Council chambers here in Fillmore. Thank you, everyone.